Good, oh, oh, you did it. Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, February 26, 2025. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kill Smith. Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
And Mr. Strasburger.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers of the rules of council state. The comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. After you are called, please restate your name for the record and provide your neighborhood. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Azasha Mininfield. Is Azasha Mininfield with us? If not, that exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Good morning. My name is Javon F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. I want to, I would like to let you, I would like to explain something about myself so maybe you will understand why I keep coming down here speaking before city council. Years ago, when they were talking about putting the Meg left up at Crawford, Crawford Hill, right at the top of the hill, we go straight downtown and that, that car would have took us down downtown in three minutes. I came down and said, I can walk downtown in ten. Three minutes is entirely too fast. We didn't want it. But Hurstburg and Riccardi, they would say, get that money, get that money. Okay, so then I started petition up there in Crawford Square. And we said, give it to those three council people. We don't want it in the Hill District. So they let it go. I'm coming down because when I come, there's a reason. Because you don't know everything you may think you know. I'm talking about where I live at, you may not know. And, and I'm just going to deviate for one minute. Ms. Ms. Warwick, when you had, when they had the people, the children here from the carpentry, and you told them about, um, yes, and they don't have to go to college, they can make as much money. Well, me, myself, when I finished high school, I wanted to go to college. I wasn't able to. We had Conley. The board was so into the children need to go to college, need to go to, they closed Conley Vocational School. Now they're trying to open, they opened some back in the school district. I want you to understand that knowledge is power and we die for lack of knowledge. If you don't know, there's times that we will. I, um, just want to say something real fast. My granddaughter, now here's a picture of Mr. Lavelle. My granddaughter went, she came, she said, Grandma, Grandma, I met Dr. Lavelle. I said, Dr. Lavelle from city council. I said, he ain't no doctor, he's a councilman. So then she was telling me, she says, um, well, um, she's in this U-step program that Mr. Lavelle used to be in years ago. So Mrs. George was telling my grandbaby how I give Mr. Lavelle hard time. And I was telling Mr. Lavelle, and I told your father how you give me a hard time. But I told him that that, and Michelle, that's my grandbaby. And here's the thing, she's high on it. I told you, I'm getting old now. And Mr. Dr. Miller said, don't say about you getting old because they really throw you, old people to the dogs. But I'm getting old. But Michelle is on the way. She's going to be in my place. So you just have a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Special Agent Sunshine. I return to send any voodoo hexes curse that send towards me 100 million billion trillion Google clicks and whoever send it nor throw them into a lake of fire. Proverbs 1431 says, whoever oppresses the poor shows contempt for their maker, but whoever is kind to the needy honors God. I didn't realize how much God has been using me to just stand in faith and trust Him and show the world that we really have to love each other, y'all. I know it's hard. It's hard. For me, it's hard because people are still trying to kill me. And it's amazing because I'm here for a reason. And I came across this passage not even five minutes ago that I'm going to share with you from Romans, chapter four, verse 13 through 17, it says, "It was not through the law that Abraham and his offspring received a promise that he would be heir of the world, but through the righteousness that comes by faith. For it is those who depend on the law or heirs." Faith means nothing and the promise is worthless because the law brings wrath. Doesn't it, you guys? Because y'all ain't keeping the law, y'all breaking it and it's bringing wrath to this entire world, our government, the corruption, y'all. God sees it, I promise you. And where there is no law, there is no transgression. Nobody's being held accountable. You're just doing what you want to do and making people suffer is not okay. Therefore, the promise comes by faith so that it may be by grace and may be guaranteed to all Abraham's offspring, not only to those who are of the law, but also to those who have the faith of Abraham. He is the father of us all. As it is written, I have made you a father of many nations. Here's our Father in the sight of God and whom we believe, the God who gives life to the dead and calls into being things that were not. I was killed twice on paper, y'all, twice, for money by my real mother, whoever did it, whoever signed off on that. Surprise, I'm not dead. So I promise you, God saw you sign off on it, whether you're a judge, lawyer, whoever did it, God saw you. He knows where you are at this very moment. Lord, forgive them. They know not what they've done. In Jesus' name, amen.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll turn to our Standing Committee agenda, beginning with the First Committee, which is Finance and Law, chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. Our first new paper is Bill 1515.
Bill 1515, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 Through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements, Recreation, and Senior Centers by $500,000 and Increasing Park Reconstruction by $500,000."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1516.
Bill 1516, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Blake Consulting LLC in an amount not to exceed $10,000 over one year for expert witness services in connection with ongoing litigation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, we need a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We need a motion, uh, for, to approve the P cards.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I wanted to note that we got a, a note from, um, our budget office that there is a PLI charge of 11, over $11,000. It's the quarterly permit payment that PLI has to make to the state from their trust fund, and so we'll need to waive the rules of council.
Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further discussion on the P cards? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards have been approved. That moves us to Public Safety and Wellness Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Coghill. Our first new paper is Bill 1512.
Bill 1512, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioner for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the fire company and emergency medical services grant in the amount not to exceed $15,000 for training and certification of Freedom House participants.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, it's access to Bill 1513.
Bill 1513, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioner for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the fire company and emergency medical services grant in the amount not to exceed $15,676.48 to purchase trauma bags.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Warwick. First bill is 1517.
Bill 1517, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to take all necessary actions to acquire and secure a right of way in permanent and/or temporary construction easements as needed, including the taking of property by eminent domain if necessary, involving the Swindell Bridge project and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $0.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1518.
Bill 1518, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement to provide membership dues with the National Association of City Transportation Officials, Inc., from January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025, not to exceed $33,125.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, Councilwoman Warwick?
No, no, not on this one. But I do after, yeah.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Human.
Oh, I, I do have, sorry, there was, um, uh, what was the bill, 2025 1560 that we waived Rule 8 on yesterday, and I'm not seeing it here.
It is under, uh, Innovation and Performance.
Oh, okay, apologies. Go ahead, thanks.
So that'll move us to the Human Resources Committee, which is chaired by Mrs. Sharland. We have one bill, 1511.
Bill 1511, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Goodwill of Southwest, Western Pennsylvania for administrative services related to the 2025 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program at a cost not to exceed $200,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to the Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Wilson. We have one paper, Bill 1520.
Bill 1520, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 857 of 2023, effective December 27, 2023, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2024 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2024 Community Development Program, and the 2024 Through 2029 Capital Improvement Program by Updating the Name Pittsburgh Flag Football Corporation as a Grant to Pennsylvania Flag Football Foundation and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement for Total Cost of $10,000."
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Gross. One supplemental paper, Bill 1560.
Bill 1560, Resolution Amending Resolution 19 of 2024, which amends Resolution 156 of 2023, which provided for the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Root Smart Technologies, Inc., which provides trash and recycling routing optimization for the purchase and implementation of navigation software that will provide turn-by-turn directions to environmental service drivers by extending the term through November 30, 2027, and by increasing the total amount by $72,707 for a total not to exceed of $247,127.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion. Thanks, sorry, I wasn't briefed on this bill, so I'll defer.
Discussion, Councilwoman Wilson.
I was, um, I, I have an email in front of me because I think they had emailed me instead of, um, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of it, of the next bill on the agenda, my apologies.
Is there someone who can speak to the, the bill?
Uh, let's see.
1514?
Is Director Hornstein?
1560.
No. Oh, Ms. Moore is here.
Morning.
Morning. Yeah. How, how are you doing this morning?
Fine, thank you.
Good. Do you state your name and title?
Gwendolyn Moore, Assistant Director of Business Technology with the Department of Innovation and Performance.
Thanks. And can you tell us what's before us? I, I see that it's extending, uh, the Route Smart, what's it called? Route Smart Technologies. It's increasing it by 72,000.
Around 1514?
1560.
No, no, 1560.
Irene, are you familiar with Route Smart? Are you familiar with Route Smart? I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
Is it sponsored by the bill?
It's DP, it was Director Hornstein that, yeah, it's a DPW. Oh, well, no, I'm.
It's a technology they use in, in IMP, but, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought you went 1514, I'm sorry.
So why don't we leave this one open, see if we can get Director Hornstein or someone from DPW to respond to members' questions, and then we'll move on and we'll continue moving through the agenda, if that's okay with members.
Mm-hmm.
All right? So let us go to Bill 1514, which Ms. Moore is here for.
Thank you, sorry.
Bill 1514, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Plant Moran, PLLC, to serve as an enterprise resource planning consultant to lead requirements, gathering, and procurement efforts to support the future implementation of an enterprise resource planning system. Total cost is not to exceed $300,000 over two years.
Motion to approve.
Discussion.
Second.
With discussion?
Um, I, I wasn't briefed on this one, but I am glad that we have IMP people there. Thank you for being there. I apologize I'm not there in person today. I would like to have someone at the table, um, remind council members just how big, um, our ERP systems are and, um, and why this is an important first step in the process to replace them.
Heidi's available online. Heidi, would you like to start?
I'd be happy to. Good afternoon, Heidi Norman, Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance. So an ERP system that we currently use here in the city is called JD Edwards, and it is a system that has been in use by the city for a very long period of time. And the version of it that we are currently on is pretty much past end of life. And no, it does not offer the functionality that is required to be in compliance with, pardon me, current and modern financial and budgeting systems. The, the approach that, uh, the city has decided to take in consultation with a number of other departments who are heavy users of JD Edwards is to bring in a consultancy which has done this type of work and can advise us and guide us on the best approach that we can use to go to RFP to replace this system. Anytime an organization, particularly a governmental organization is replacing ERP system, it is always a multi-year process. These systems underpin pretty much everything that the government does in terms of our accounting and financial systems. They're very important, they're very delicate, and it takes a lot of people and a lot of resources to get it right. In this case, um, we decided as a cross-departmental team that we should hire a group that has expertise and uses, um, their knowledge and experience to guide us here. The RFP that was put out was to find such a consultancy. And the reason particularly that we wanted to do this is because we actually don't have anyone in government that has expertise in these types of systems particularly. So much like, um, if you are going in for surgery, you want a surgeon that has done that type of surgery quite often. This is the same situation, but on the IT side. I have invited Gwen Moore, who is the Assistant Director of Business Technology, to lead discussion at the table, and we have a number of people from different departments who participated on the RFP committee and can answer your questions regarding how these types of systems ought to be used and why it's important that we are approaching this very significant effort in a collaborative manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I just want maybe to elaborate on one of the things that you said that was, an ERP system underpins everything we do. But I do still want a better picture for all of us at the table about what, when you say underpins everything that we do, um, you know, just how fundamental to operations is an ERP system. So Gwendolyn, maybe you want to elaborate on that?
Yes, thank you. So the Enterprise Resource Planning System is the foundation for collection of our funding and also for distribution of it. So Finance takes it in, and then the Controller's Office pays the bills. So essentially, we would not be able to operate, function properly without that as our basic system, to make our payments, be aware of what, what, uh, make payments and also be aware of items that we owe or what is owed to us.
Okay, let me ask a couple questions. Paying your fees to get an electrical permit at PLI? Yes?
That funding goes into the PLI fund, and then it goes into our general fund, and then I think, I think, is someone here from Finance? Yes. I think, I'm on the IT side, I think it may be better to identify that flow by the, let the Finance Department do that. Thank you, Ian.
I'm Ian Fitzgerald, Deputy Director of Finance Department. Yeah, so basically, you know, various financial aspects flow in through our department, but they also flow in through other softwares throughout the city and different departments that then get deposited into JD accounts, and there's a, you know, depends on the type of, of workflow. But the current JD system, which is a little antiquated, it makes it harder to sort of see those flows as easily, but, and we have a lot of manual processes to help have that money flow from, from other softwares. I don't know if that answered your question directly, but, yes.
No.
So, yeah, it would.
No, sorry, it doesn't relate. So, um, what we're faced with here is that we have a patchwork of software systems throughout various departments, yes?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, again, I'm sorry, this would be so much easier if I were there in person, but you really don't want me there in person today. So, um, and that we really need help to figure out kind of just how much it will, the steps we need to take to get past like aging outdated software. You know what it's like when your, like, software won't work on your computer anymore or it just won't update? That's kind of how we are with JD. And that to get all of the dollars tracked from where they're coming in to where they need to be, plus tracking where the dollars are to where they need to get to is the way I understand an ERP. Did I say that incorrectly?
You're correct. Yes, you are correct.
Okay, the one question we had next, I'm sure other members have questions, and so I'll, I'll defer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other members? Council, Councilman?
Yeah. Thank you for being here today. I have been briefed, you know, a good bit on this. As I understand it, we are going to get, this is to pay for a consultant to help with putting together a bid and understanding the workflows that are all required in the, the JD system or what, what may replace it. Do you know how much we pay for the JD system?
We first purchased the JD system, we partnered with Allegheny County, and at the, just, I can share this. For JD, we were paying about $700,000 a year, I'm sorry, $800,000 a year for the service from the county or licensing and what have you. But the actual implementation of JD, I don't know what that was. That was done, I believe, in 2011 when we moved from PeopleSoft to JD, and I don't have those records, I'm sorry.
Okay, so in 2011, or, we've been paying $800,000 a year for the, for using JD's software?
Previously. What we did is in 2021, we did a lift and shift, and we migrated away from the county service center managing our JD system and having JD directly from Oracle to us controlling our JD system. So right now, we have a company called ERP One Consulting, who does all of our management of the application ourself. The manage, the application itself now is in the cloud, that's Cherry Road, and then we have the licensing from Remedy Street. So as of now, we pay, excuse me, $300,000, I'm sorry. For now, we pay $336,000 a year for us controlling the JD system with our partners. What we're trying to do now is to migrate away from JD as our enterprise resource system, but we need an expert such as Planet Moran to help us to develop the RFI. We're developing an RFI first because we don't know what a new ERP system's going to cost, so we don't know what to budget. So as we, we don't make an award as a result to the RFI. We get the information as to what it would, potentially will cost to actually implement a system. Once we do the RFI, we're going to go to the TLC and request funding that was presented in the RFI. Then if that funding is approved, then we will issue an RFP to actually get a new system. But as you are aware, we cannot go to bid without having funding, so that's why we're issuing the RFI first, because we don't have the expertise in-house to be able to project exactly how much that would be. So Plant Moran will, will develop the, will look, observe our workflows, develop the RFI, we're asking them to, with your permission, I'm sorry, develop the RFI, probably issue it in March, and then have those results in June so that we can go through the TLC in July and ask for the funding, to issue the RFP later this year. in July and ask for the funding, to issue the RFP later this year.
So, will Plant Moran help with the implementation of the new system when the new system happens?
That's a great question. We consider that, that they would be our advisors, but based on the platform that we select, so let's say we selected Workday or another Oracle product, I think we would prefer to have a consultant who's expert in that particular application platform, so that you wouldn't want, so Plant Moran is a generalist when it comes to ERP systems, they're aware of all of them, but once we select one, we would want, I think, our implementer to be expert in that area. The vendor who we select may have that expert on their team, and then Plant Moran would just be our advocate during that process.
It, it is a lot of money to put together, you know, to, as the end result being the RFP. So, I, I am, you know, as I've, as this has been explained to me, I am, I, I understand the need to upgrade from JDE. Everyone who interacts with JDE has, you know, has nothing good to say about it. I'll just say that. And I understand that, that, that is something we need to move on from. My concern has been, we have boatloads of deferred maintenance in this city. You know, close your eyes and point. And is this the thing that we need to upgrade this year?
That's a great question. We're asking for it now because the actual implementation period is two to five years. So, if we get approval this year to award it, we're going to take '26 and '27 to do the preliminary implementation and be able to go live with some form of a new JDE, a new ERP in 2028, but we're asking now so that we can have it in 2028 or 2029. The thing is, if JDE breaks, we have no way of collecting the money and paying the bills. So, that's why we're taking the strategic plan of, we lifted and shifted away from the county, we saved $1.2 million or $300,000 a year by doing that. Now, we want to invest, well, now we want to invest in a consultant who can help us get through the next two years so that in 2028, we can go live. Every year that we defer the decision to hire a consultant and go through this process, we still have two more years out before we have a new system. So, I think it is imperative now. There are a lot of other systems that we have, but this is our primary way of collecting and distributing funds. Without those funds, we can't support any of the other applications. So, again, we're making the decision now to hire someone to help us, but the actual system will not be available until 2028, if we make that decision this year.
Sure. And so, I, you know, I, again, I understand the, the need to, to make that switch. Let me ask this. One of the things I've heard is, I've kind of done some research on this, has been that we're, we've got a patchwork of solutions to make JDE work, that, you know, JD is, is held together with, with Band-Aids of, of other programs, other softwares. Has, do we have an accounting of, of how much that is, that's costing us?
I think that it's more or less more manual labor. We have, so within JD, there are others, smaller applications that contribute to it, but not on a large scale. It's really more of the manual processes that we need to automate and optimize to make it a better experience for both our staff and our constituents and working with our system.
I was really hoping that you would tell me that there's a bunch of other softwares that we're paying for to make JD work, and those add up to $300,000.
No. No, I'm sorry, that's not the case.
Okay.
But I, I would say that, Ian, if you want to quantify the amount of time that the people are doing, doing those manual processes, it's a lot more than $300,000.
In internal labor?
Yes.
Yeah, and some of that also carries over into other departments, like, we obviously interact with the Controller's Office, and we have reporting compliance with our auditors, and not having information readily available is, I mean, it's there, but you have to usually shoot emails, could someone track this down? Like, the, the modern ERP systems provide more at-your-fingertips type of an approach where you can see data in a little more real time. Obviously, they would have to go through the Controller's Office and audits and formalize that part, but it would be readily available.
Now, when we did the lift and shift, as you're describing it, which I think is a great name, the, from the county, is that where we lost the support services from JDE? You, you mentioned that there's not support, that they're not able to help us. Is that because we moved away from the county? Does the county still have the support services and we don't?
The county still has direct support services from Oracle.
Yeah.
And, but the problem was that Oracle overcharged us for our licensing and for our services, which is one of the reasons why we saved so much money while we wanted to do the lift and shift. The, the count, the version of JD that we're on is 9.2, and if we had stayed with the county, we could have upgraded to the next most recent version of JDE, but we'd be paying so much more money because Oracle never relinquished on giving us a break. When we first signed on with Oracle, the salespeople told the people making decisions at that time that we would, there would be other city entities that we could, we could work with and we could resell our JDE to them, such as the school district, the water authority. That didn't happen, but Oracle still charged us for that volume of licenses. We asked them not to do that, they said that they couldn't, they couldn't do it. So, that was one of the reasons why we migrated away from the, the county and Oracle support. And we considered that any other application at this time would be much more cost-effective and much more user-friendly for us as a city.
At the end of the day, when we go, put in the bid and someone, you know, go through procurement and get the new system, is the hope that that system will save us money at the end of the day? That, you know, I, I was told one of the things, you know, in, in theory, that a lot of Ceridian or Dayforces applications could be done through something like this ERP, and that maybe we wouldn't have to have both? And that could save us the money?
That, your, your statement is partially correct. When we issue the RFI, we're going to issue the RFI for human capital management, which is HR, which is Day, which Dayforce does, and for financials and procurement, which is what Controller's Office and Finance does. Because of the length of time for the procurement process, our plan is to only do the financials in 2028. If, as a result of the RFI, we can see that it may be more cost-effective to combine the human capital management Dayforce application into one platform with financials and procurement, we can do that, but we will not be able to do it until '29 and '30. So, essentially, we would stay on Dayforce for four or five more years, to do the, the, the financial and procurement in '26 and '27, go live with that in '28, and then afterwards, according to the decisions of the city, they could migrate away from Dayforce and include the human capital management in a ERP solution, yes. Will it, will it, will it save us money? Perhaps because you don't have dual licenses, but I can't say that for sure. But we will know as a result of the RFI, that's why we're doing the RFI, so we can understand what all of our options are and really make an, an informed decision as to how we want to work in the future.
And can you help me understand better why it is that our, we can't internally put out this RFP? That why we're, we're spending, I'll, I mean, this is a lot of money to put together this RFP. I, it was explained to me as, because this group would be able to see us through the implementation, but you're saying that's not really?
They, I'm sorry, maybe I misspoke. They will see us through the implementation, but they may not be the experts in that solution. So, the vendor who, whatever vendor we choose will have an expert in their solution as well, but Plant Moran will help us through that process. The other thing is that we can't really predict how things are going to go, but we assume that we will be much more efficient and have, be able to provide you with more reporting and things like that. So, by having those additional capabilities, we will have to spend more. I can't say we're going to save money. I've looked, we've done a lot of research, but I don't think that we're going to save money. And, for instance, with Ian's group, right now, he has, your people are working on the CSS implementation. The people still have to do their day-to-day work. How can they do their day-to-day work and then help us with this new process to change, to, to move away from JDE? We, they're, they're, they're working full-time now, just doing the things that they have to do. They don't have the bandwidth or the expertise to help us to do all the workflows and write the RFI. That's why we're hiring the consultant, because, see, we're hoping that CSS goes live in December.
Hopefully.
So, they really need to focus on that. So, in order for us to get something done this year, we really have to have a consultant help us. Controller's Office doesn't have the bandwidth to help either, so, not, not just the bandwidth, but the, the expertise in these platforms. So, that's why we need to have the consultant as well.
Okay. Yeah, I, it, I, I fully understand the, and I'm fully supportive of the, the switch out of JDE. It's just, this is, this is quite a, quite a price tag here for a consultant to, to understand our workflow enough to put together a competitive RFP, and that's, in, in the financial state that we're in, I, I think that's, it's scary.
We went through a competitive bid process.
Yeah.
And we had a team of representatives from most of the departments, and Plant Moran really was the best, most cost-effective response. We had responses that were like a million dollars.
If I may?
Go on, yes.
Hi. So, to speak directly to your concern, one of the benefits of the lift and shift that happened in 2001, as Gwendolyn referred to previously, is that over the four years, we have saved $1.2 million. We are asking for one quarter of that over a two-year period of time for these consultants. When you think about $300,000 and what percentage of that is, what percentage of that it compared to our overall city's operating budget, it's extremely small. And when we think about just how good does our base core financial system need to be? How accurate, how automated, how modern, in order to not only save the, be able to be responsive to the needs of the Finance Department, the Controller's Office, and others? But in addition to that, the amount of waste and inefficiency that is currently being utilized in order to ensure that all of the other systems that are either bringing in funds, such as through OnePGH, or expending funds, all of those manual processes and duplication of effort and things that take a longer period of time today should be greatly minimized with the new system. I think when we think of it that way, in terms of sheer dollars, but as a percentage of the overall operating budget, I think $300,000, when it's only one quarter of what we've saved over the past four years, is actually a really good and thoughtful expenditure of our residents' hard-earned tax dollars.
Well, you know, but also what I'm hearing is that by doing the lift and shift, we've also made our JDE system obsolete. So, when that decision?
No, that's a little bit of a mischaracterization. We were not able to purchase a new version of JDE at that time. The version of JDE that we are using is the same version that we were using through the county. So, doing the lift and shift actually had nothing to do with the quality of the JDE system. What it did was reduce the amount of money that we were spending to have another agency, the county, service that system and to purchase licenses through the county. Now, we're servicing the system ourselves, and we're purchasing licenses directly, and that's where the savings came from. So, the system itself didn't change. It's, it's how we're administering the system and how we're, where we're storing the information in the system now in the cloud rather than on an on-premise server. Just to help, if that's clarifying?
Just as a clarification, for the JDE licenses, we paid $537,000 in year one, $539,000 in year two, $541,000 in year three, and $543,000 in year four. That was, that's what we would have paid if we had stayed with the county. Our total bill now is not that. So, my point is that the Oracle licensing is more, was so much more, that we really have no choice but to do the lift and shift, have our licenses be managed by ERP One, save that money, and then get a new, modern system.
In, like, in a way, it's, like, I have an old laptop, right? And so, my laptop just notified me that I can't get a new update, that the update it did is the last update it's going to get. And in a way, that seems like what we, kind of what we've done with the JDE system, is that, is that we've, we've said, we're not going to go along with the new updates from the software anymore, we're not going to have the technical support from the software by purchasing these licenses. So, we're allowing, basically, to run, run the system, you know, until the, the wheels fall off. And, and then we're saving the money from that. So, I, I'm not sure that that, I don't know, I, maybe I'm, I'm not understanding it well enough, but, I, again, I, I understand the need to do this, this shift, I just, this is a lot of money for someone to put together a procurement package for us, so.
Can I weigh in on, like, the component of the expertise side of things and how important it is? So, one thing that will help is, they will go around and interview all of the various departments that are involved. You know, for instance, Finance, we have our team, they'll talk to us, we'll be like, this is what we need out of our system, they'll actually recommend improvements and rope that in. But then they're going to turn around and talk to the Controller's Office, Human Resources, Council Budget, you, you name it. And their expertise is where it's valuable in keeping things running smoothly from this perspective, because they'll be able to recommend the, the best option or help us navigate the RFP so that the RFP is properly drafted, so we don't run into delays or cost overruns in the long run. So, if we miss something in an RFP and then we develop it and we have to go ask them, there'll be costs over there. So, we're, we can't measure that savings, but there's a potential that if we do it right the first time, which is why we're hiring them to be the experts, and hopefully, you know, obviously, we, we've reviewed them and reviewed 16 applications, I believe. So, hopefully, the, you know, the cream rises to the crop and they're the best for the job, given the price. They will be able to help us stay on track and prevent overruns, which is another component of it. But we don't have, we can't give you that number, right, until we were to make a mistake, which hopefully we don't, you know? That's part of it, at least from my perspective in Finance. We want it, want it to run smoothly because it's less work on our end, and we can focus on bringing in tax dollars or devote resources elsewhere to, to, you know, there's a downstream effect of that. At least, that's where I'm coming from.
All right. I've gone on long enough. That's the, enough for my, my questions there.
Thank you. Councilman Warwick?
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that last point, because that was what I was going to raise. So, just to, just to clarify, it is, it's standard for any company, whether it's a, you know, a public sector organization or a company, when they do major IT upgrades, that it is not, that you partner with somebody, right? You find a partner who is an expert in doing those upgrades. And this requirements gathering is the first step. And as you said, right, it is literally going around, because these are massive systems with lots and lots and lots of functionality, and they aren't, that, there are components that can work sort of out of the box, as you, but you, but you want to make sure that it actually does the thing that you need it to do, right? So, and this can get down into, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this can get down into literally sitting down with your finance team and saying, for example, okay, what are the reports that you need to run? And so, literally going through like item by item, these are the reports that I run, you know, I need to see A, B, C as it compares to X, Y, Z, and I need to be able to run these reports, and those reports need to be. and I need to be able to run these reports, and those reports need to be configured in the system. And so imagine that for, like, from literally every employee and then expand that out into multiple departments. And that's why when companies do deploy large ERP systems or, and you know, any type of software system, they need to do that and they need a, an expert in that, in that system to help with that process because their own IT department doesn't have the capacity, because it is an entire job unto itself. Now, the other option is hiring someone to do that, right? Like, and that, that would be something. But in this case, if it's a two-year process, and when we hire someone, that is generally a five-year commitment, right? You're going to hire someone with benefits and all of that stuff. So in this case, you know, if it's a two-year commitment and we can get someone for 150,000 a year, which for this type of work is not out of the ordinary, right? You know, if we can get someone for two years and then cut them loose at the end of those two years compared to hiring somebody for, say, I don't know, 110,000 for five years. And then they're, you know, I just, my point is to say that, that this is very much standard procedure for implement, you know, for, for any company in the private sector, public sector, for implementing a large, you know, this, first of all, this requirements gathering component as sort of like the first phase of the plan, of the planning. Because you can't just plug in these systems and have them work in all the departments. So I don't know if there's anything you all want to add to that, but that's my understanding.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I feel like there's so many times where you come to the table requesting money for this department. It's very difficult for us, those of us especially who are not really involved in this kind of work. I mean, I tell people, my brother was the dean of Carnegie Mellon and did a lot of this. He was computer science and engineering. I'm not, and I never was. So I will just say, for me, it's difficult to track and understand. And yet every week or every, every, every couple, few weeks, you're here asking for large amounts of money. And yet I see the things we have invested in not working the way that we would have hoped. I see snowplow tracker not current. I see 311 not working the way that we had hoped. I'm seeing a lot of things that are, that we're investing in, hoping that we're going to get great results for the residents, not yielding those results that we want. So for me, when you talk about giving $300,000 to a consultant, I say, why don't you save that money and go talk to CMU and partner with them? We have universities here that people around the world partner with, and yet we don't utilize them the way that we probably could. We don't partner with them the way that we should. And we don't save the money for the taxpayers that we should. So I'm going to vote no on this today because I want to know when you have conversations with the universities around us that they are telling you, no, they can't do this stuff. And then if they can't, then I'm willing to have the conversations about funding. Otherwise, we need police vehicles, we need fire trucks, we need ambulances, and we need, obviously, a lot of equipment for snow removal. So with those things, with that said, I would really be, I actually think I'm going to do something legislatively to make sure that those conversations happen before you pursue any more consultants. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, I have one question. Is it also, I believe this is the case, tell me if I'm right or wrong. Is it also fair to say that JD Edwards was never built for the city of Pittsburgh? It was just something that was sort of forced upon us? Versus what we're doing now will actually be a system that is built for the city to function appropriately? Okay. Thank you.
Partner with Allegheny County. And the system was designed based on Allegheny County's requirements, not ours.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mosley?
Thank you for coming today. I think I just have, you know, one question for myself and hopefully, you know, for the, for the public as well. Now, understanding that, you know, part of my question is hypothetical because, you know, no, you know, new system, you know, has been identified. But if you could kind of give somewhat of a side-by-side comparison of an ideal system, you know, versus the current system that's in place? And how, you know, those two systems will work differently? And why, you know, one of the potential systems that's out there that would potentially be identified by this consulting firm is much more preferable than, than what we have and what that would mean to us as city employees as well as the residents?
I can answer from an IT perspective, and I would ask Ian to answer from a finance perspective. But one of the things that we, that's really important are the report, is the reporting and the integration with the systems, so that it's an automatic interface, two-way with our other applications. That's very important from the IT perspective. Also having mobile access, where you can work from home and also work anywhere and access the system so that if one of the council people call and ask for information, it's right there at your fingertips, no matter where you are. That's my answer from an IT perspective, and Ian can answer from a financial perspective.
Yeah, and I think that just the modernization of, of the software itself will streamline the ability to have data at your fingertips, also be able to see maybe workflows. I think sometimes with the current system, you can't always see what the big picture is. Like, obviously, especially what I talked about before, how multiple departments interact with each other. Sometimes now you have to go in multiple different spots, or you have to reach out via email, wait for that person to reply back to you. You might be able to see some of those things in real time, with the caveat that, you know, a lot of times the money has to also be formally reviewed by the controller's office. So stuff like that, I think it's just, you know, it'll create better collaboration. You know, procurement, controller's office, finance, HR, council budget office, budget office. Like, those are the main players that it would affect. So I think just giving everyone a better view of what's going on will help. You know, I know from a perspective of forecasting too, like, the more real-time data we have, the better our forecast can be, you know, without having to go and track down so-and-so in this section of a department, we might be able to see it in real time. Or know when that moment in time is, like, two weeks, whatever it is.
And just one quick follow-up. Mrs. Moore, you refer to reports, like, what nature of reports you're talking about? Like, the types of reports that would be helpful, you know, given a new system?
Yes, I mean, it could be, you know, special, specialty reports based on, you know, the type of revenues that are brought in. It could also be specific reports, like if we have certain audit requests from our auditors, that type of thing. You know, we have reporting requirements, you know, it could be the ACFIR, it could be GASB, which is the government accounting standards. So just those types of things, which we would build out within the workflow process.
And also from an IT perspective, for instance, we spend money on software and on hardware. Well, in JDE, software and hardware are under computer maintenance. So we can't say, oh, you know, how much have we spent? We can't, it's not an automated process for us to determine how much we pay over a certain period of time for, I'm sorry, over a certain period of time for application software or for hardware. We have to do all those, those things manually. We'd be able to do that, we'd be able to have more detailed identifiers for each line item to be able to understand how our money is being spent. And also be able to understand where we are with our budget, how much money is remaining so that during the course of the year, many times, we have to scramble to find additional funds because we weren't aware that we were spending so much down. To be able to see all that real time with a newer system.
All right. And my final question is, could you just speak a little bit to what the council president alluded to of what made the current system that we have not the best system, you know, for the city? What about that system, you know, does not, you know, serve the interest of your department, the finance department, as well as the city as a whole in the best way?
So when we originally purchased, or when we originally partnered with Allegheny County, we were under financial oversight. So they did it as an, it was more of an economic decision, I think. And the people who configured the system worked for the county to develop the counties, from the county's perspective. We were just like the stepchild, so to speak. So we did not have all of the systems configured to our specifications. So now we're working with a system, we have to do some additional manual work. Whereas if it had been configured exactly to our specifications, we probably would not be where we are now.
Ian, I don't know if you have anything to add?
I was not around during some of that, way back when. So I can't directly relate to what happened with the county and so forth. But, you know, I just think it, it's not a modern system too. So I mean, obviously, a long, long period of time has passed since we actually signed up for that. And there's new technologies happening rapidly, which is also kind of like, the way I'm looking at it is it's a giant reset button to allow us to operate more efficiently, streamline our processes, look at our workflows and actually see, hey, sometimes these consultants will suggest, like, there's a better way to do this. Or like, what you're doing is antiquated because of your current system. You know, when we roll this out, you'll be able to just see like that path of like, if I send a refund file over to the controller's office, maybe we can see it. We don't have to email them, be like, hey, do you make sure you got it? Like, whatever, or send hard copies or even PDF attachments. It might just flow, which saves everyone time. So that's sort of, you know, what we don't have in JDE. You know, I know also sometimes multiple things get put together into a report. You know, I believe, I was talking to Pete before this about the agenda, like, there are three different things that caused this to be created. Whereas if the ERP is done correctly, maybe you don't even have that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to go back to the question, just so I can understand, of a little bit more about when we did purchase it. So you said that we basically cooperated with the county? And was it part of their RFP process?
I'm sorry. I don't know if the county went through an RFP process. I'm not sure. I don't know about that. But I do know that when we migrated from PeopleSoft to JDE, at that time, PeopleSoft was no longer meeting our requirements. I think we'd had PeopleSoft since 1996. So in 2009, when we were in financial oversight, we were told, according to the information that I have, to partner with the, with the county. I don't think, I know we didn't issue an RFP, but I don't know if the county did or not.
And what are some of the specifics that didn't work, that doesn't work for us?
I'm sorry?
What are some of the, well, first off, do you know if they're having problems?
The county?
Yeah, with JD Edwards.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. What about, you said there were some specific things that we had to change because it, you know, that JD Edwards didn't relate to us at the city? But what are those?
The way we're, from an IT...
What's a good example?
From an IT perspective, as one of the things, one of the examples I gave is that we don't have specific, enough specific details to be able to run reports on the actual spend of our money. So we know that it came from a particular account, but was that for software? Was it for something else? So we're not able to identify through the system how we're spending money. We have to do manual processes to say, oh, that's Microsoft, that's software. Oh, that's Computronics, that's software. But if we had a more modern system, we would have a field that actually identified what, not just the item, but what it actually is or does. That would be much more simple for us.
This is for purchasing?
I'm sorry?
You're describing a situation where we're purchasing something?
So our...
Is that what you're describing?
Each department has a budget. And in their budget, they are allocated different amount of funds by your approval for different items. So for instance, we're allotted, allotted, let's say, 1.5 million dollars for Microsoft. We're allotted, you know, $5,000 for computers. As we go through the course of that year, we deduct our spend based on the invoices that we receive. Right now, we have to go back and manually look at those reports to see which type of item that invoice paid for. We know, but in a new system, we could just push a button and it would say, because you had more detail on the items that were included on that budget line, we could very easily identify where our money is spent and what's remaining during the course of the year.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for first round? If not, Councilwoman Smith, second round? All right, so all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Upstand. Also abstain.
Upstand.
Any opposed? Three abstentions, affirmative recommendation. Thank you. That takes us back to Bill 1560, which is open and on the table. So Director Hornstein, if you would please come join us?
Which one is this?
This is the RouteSmart for environmental services.
If you would kindly introduce yourself and maybe give us an overview of the bill.
Yes, absolutely. Chris Hornstein, I'm the director of Public Works. All apologies for being delayed. Also, just want to give a quick shout-out to Don Mudrick, who normally would be here with me on these items, but is at home ill. So, Don, if you're watching, please be well. That was kind of a last-minute thing. This legislation in front of us relates to RouteSmart. RouteSmart is the system we are working to implement routing, in cab routing for our environmental services garbage trucks. So, you know, this directly relates to their work. Additionally, the software also allows us to more easily reconfigure those routes for efficiency, for managing weight, for, if you will, you know, adapting to our changing city landscape. So we see this as necessary technology. We've been doing this work for a couple of years now. So, and it's a little bit unclear in the legislation, so I want to prooffer this information. So the contract amendment that you see in front of you is proposed. We have been working with RouteSmart to migrate to what we call, what they, what they would refer to as a web application. Our current, our, our approach had been working on their enterprise system. They have discontinued their enterprise system, but they've been working with us to try to make the transition. In order to do so, you know, we need to, we have a situation where we have to have both systems live for a period of time, which is what the increased cost is. However, I'd note that in 2026, we will be going to solely the web application, which is at a lower rate, roughly $40,000 a year for the web application, as opposed to $56,000 currently for the enterprise system. So in 2026, excuse me, we would be transitioning to a lower cost. So there is, there is an increased cost this year as we make this transition from one system to another. But we are very close to having this implemented and testing in trucks. This is one step in the process that we need to take to make sure that it's solvent. So just asking for your consideration and, you know, happy to ask, or sorry, answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you very much. We'll begin with Councilman Wilson.
Thanks for that overview. All right, so just so I get my bearings here.
Yes.
This is RouteSmart?
Correct.
And this is what Environmental Services currently uses?
Well, we are looking to, we are looking to implement. Currently, all routes are paper routes. So we are looking to modernize the system. We would have had this, we used this system in the past, roughly 10 years ago or so. But currently...
So this says increase in the total amount by 72, so we must already have a contract with RouteSmart?
This is correct.
Okay. Where do we use that?
I'm sorry? Can you repeat the question?
Where do we use RouteSmart?
We are building...
If we're not using it for environmental services?
Right. We are, the current contract is to build the system out for us.
Oh, okay, so this is something that we already voted on?
Correct.
To build out for Environmental Services?
Yes.
And now you're coming to get more, more money to do it better?
Yes, to make this, to make this transition to the web application. So we're asking for more money so we can transition from the enterprise application that we've worked, we've been working on with them. RouteSmart has discontinued the enterprise application system-wide, so none of their current customers are going to be using that. They all need to transition to the web application. And so this money that we're requesting is to help us partner with RouteSmart to make that transition.
But like you said, we're currently not doing it right now. This is just...
Yeah, we're in the process.
If we would say yes to the 72, then we would, like, how long until they would start using this?
We would be able to begin testing in trucks, I believe, within two months was the last update I received.
This pays for the service? Does this also pay for the equipment?
We already, we've already purchased the equipment.
Okay. And what is that equipment?
That equipment is, you know, a device in the cab that informs driver of their route.
Yeah. I'm not trying to start the post-agenda now. But I do, I do have concerns about this because the snowplow, anyway, the, you know... But I do, I do have concerns about this because the snowplow, anyway, the, you know, for snowplow services, the drivers currently are using paper route.
That, that's correct, yes.
Okay, but we have, but we have the system there to do routes?
I think I will leave that to the post-agenda. That is a little more complicated than this system.
Okay, yeah, I just don't know how we talk about this without talking about that.
Understood, understood. Yeah, I, I think-
It's not my post-agenda.
No, no, totally understood.
I'm just trying to understand like what, why I would, why we would, I mean, I, look, I try to use technology as much as possible, so I totally get it. Every time, even if I go from my house to the, you know, to here, not to here, but I live pretty close, but like to my, I don't know, somewhere we want to go, you know, that's probably, I know exactly how to get there. I'm turning on the GPS sometimes because I'm like, maybe it'll tell me if there's some traffic or maybe there's a better route that I just don't know about. So I'm definitely a fan of technology. It's not, you know, it's not that. I'm just trying to understand why that system was a failure and why this one is going to be successful.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I think the fair, the fair answer to that question is, is we don't know yet if it's going to be successful, right? We, we have to implement it into the truck. You know, this was a-
Can we go through the, the failures of the prior system or what's, what's learned about it?
Oh, you mean in terms of the, in terms of the snowplow tracker?
Yeah, snowplow tracker. I imagine it's the similar technology they're going to-
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think so. I think the more broadly I would classify the failure of the snowplow tracker system previously is that, you know, it wasn't based on, from my perspective of its implementation, which again, I came in midstream on that. It wasn't based on deliberate feedback of the drivers themselves. I think in this instance, it most certainly is, and we have the opportunity to, you know, get that feedback and make adjustments accordingly.
I mean, more about that? You said a pass system you couldn't-
Correct, when the routes, when the routes were built in the pass system for the snowplow tracker, they weren't built with direct driver input. And without understanding the very technical work, they, they did have input, they, they did. I would say maybe it was not applied. That's probably a more effective answer. That's one aspect of it. The-
But like, what's a comment that the driver would say that we would need to adjust something?
Oh, I think the, the comment the driver might make in this, are we talking about the snowplow tracker? Yeah, which, which system will work?
Yeah.
It is different.
When I continually reference like, what we've learned, if we haven't used this, I'm always pointing back to the-
You're always pointing back to this previous failure, yeah. What have we learned from the previous one? I think we need to have the understanding that, you know, knowledge of the route also comes with experience, correct? So if you're a refuse driver, driving a truck for the first time, you know, you are given a folder with a paper that says, make these turns on these streets, right? And so you have to learn that, you know, we give opportunities for real time learning experiences part of that. But ultimately, at the end of the day, at some point in time in somebody's career, they're going to be getting into the truck for the first time and said, go figure this out. With that comes the inability to adjust that route based on weight. So we know, for example, we have some routes that get picked up fairly quickly and get completed early. And we have other routes in other parts of the city that are more challenging. So in terms of balancing weight, in terms of balancing the work amongst the workforce, like we, now we just have the inability to do so. So it gives us visibility into the, it gives us as managers visibility into the entire system of work. And it gives tools to the drivers to, you know, help them be where they need to be. We'll give them automatic notifications of driving conditions, so accident, construction, which has a big impact on Environmental Services.
Okay.
Any other, any other limitations that they might experience that would influence how they might choose to drive that route.
Okay, so I'll never know, sitting at this table, what is going to be good or bad. I think what I'm interested in is what support and what trial has, you know, maybe the company came in or maybe they gave us a test version, you know, what support and what trials have taken place with actual employees and their supervisor?
Right now, very limited. I mean, this, this step is necessary so we can begin those trials, right? So we can actually put devices in the truck and get meaningful driver feedback as to how they're working, what's useful for them, what's not useful for them.
How long have we signed this contract for?
This contract should end in the end of two thousand twenty-six.
And the equipment should be good for-
The devices, the devices themselves. I mean, I can't speak to whether or not the, the devices, I think, from the IMP perspective are more or less universal, like iPad, Android tablet, that type of thing. So, you know, they should be migrable. I can't really speak to that aspect of it.
Okay, so you said that there was training already with the, you know, with the workers?
There has been some, but I think we need like meaningful, like in cab experience and more robust testing, which we're very close to beginning.
And what are they, what are they and the supervisor saying?
They're, they're saying be very necessary and very, very helpful, especially for new hires, but also just day to day to understand like just changing road conditions that they might experience. You know, so for example, like right now, you know, that gives us the ability to link to, you know, similar systems that you might see in Google Maps when roads are under construction or even connect to other notification systems that might exist in traffic management system that we have with Domi or within, you know, permit application for, we will, with, for street openings for Domi, for utility cuts.
But how, okay, but how do you, how do we get them in an environment, the workers and the supervisor, where, you know, their feedback is going to be?
Oh, I think that's actually, I think the, the management team at Environmental Services has a pretty robust protocol for that, right? Like that will-
I don't know, I mean, I, I'm curious, I'm asking these questions because I have, I do know of, you know, past things that were bought for, let's say, DBW. And they're like, this isn't, like, I wish someone would have talked to me because, you know, this isn't needed. I'm not going to give specifics, but, you know, there are, you know, there are instances where things are bought and then, like, you know, we don't need this type of truck, we need this type of truck, you know, it's like-
Yeah, completely, I completely appreciate that.
I mean, we literally just had, I think, a pretty good one pager on the amount of money that was saved that, you know, it was this administration that did the leadership stuff and they, the real time safety stuff. So I'm like, trying to go back, I'm trying to go back to all the great points that were made on that. You know, spending on that, like, and learning from, learning from that, like, are we also implementing some sort of system here where this type of spending isn't going to be wasted because, you know, really the, the people on the ground are, are just, you know, not going to use it? And so I'm just trying to get, get at making sure that, you know, purchases in the past that, you know, we think were bad. Say the supervisor or the, or the workers think it's a bad purchase, you know, just so we're not in that same hole with this.
Yeah, I think, well, one, I think we have systems in place for workers to provide meaningful feedback. I think those already exist currently.
Like, what has that happened? Is that like a meeting that you all have or?
No, I mean, I think the real time safety system is an example of opportunities where they give meaningful feedback every day. And so we look to augment those using similar processes where they might have challenges on their basic job, whether it's like, hey, I can't get to the garbage to get this trash, or hey, you know, this device is showing me a road condition that doesn't exist or is not showing me a road condition that does exist, like how can we close that gap? So I think that some of those, I think some of those things can be solved with some of those, like, as you say, that feedback can be given in real time on some of those issues. I think on the broader issues, I think in this particular case, you know, as I've discussed with the team on the implementation, it really is, you know, getting distinct feedback from a subset of drivers who are going to use this to see this be, to be meaningful and helpful to them. So that, that can only happen with a device and like a specialized focus on, on its implementation.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Actually, I think I'll just wait now because I heard most of my answers already. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Sharla?
Yeah, so always excited about talking trash. The, you, you like that?
Super, he said.
No, but I, I'm always, you know, I'm always concerned about the route optimization project that we've been working with. Is, is this kind of the end result, the route optimization project feeds into this?
Oh, yeah, this is more or less the route optimization project. So we're going to testing now and implementation, but the curve ball that has been thrown here is that the migration from the enterprise system of RouteSmart to their web application, that is the cause for the increased cost and the cause for the, you know, more or less a period of duplication of services so that we can migrate from enterprise to web application.
Okay, I don't think I realized, you've mentioned it a couple of times already, that the route optimization project included balancing for weights in addition to just how many households you have to go to, which I, I didn't realize before. You know, I think it is, it is a, having those routes so wildly different is a, is a real problem, and we've talked about this a lot. And I just, knowing what we went through with adding the, the system like this to the snowplow routes and then taking it away and then maybe adding it back, I just hope that this goes better.
No, I, I completely agree. I know my team is committed to Environmental Services, is to making this as successful as possible. You know, I think that if we look at it from the perspective of creating a system of continuous improvement, where we're always just getting better every day, even a little bit at a time, you have to consider system, like the idea of route optimization, you know, the ability to kind of change those things, not in big broad strokes, but in little tiny adjustments here or there, is the way you're going to get to, I think, the most beneficial impact for both residents and the workforce that are using it. In order to do that, you have to have a tool that allows you to do that. So we look at RouteSmart as like one of those tools, you know, speaking on to the issue of the snowplow tracker. I think the thing that least impressed me from it, then the thing that we needed to move away from was the, you know, the kind of, the difficulty or the inability to kind of continuously improve that with the, with the tools we had at that time.
And I, we'll, we'll get into, I'm sure we'll get more into that this afternoon. But the other, so is RouteSmart a GPS technology? Or is it, you know, go here, go here, go here, but there doesn't act, the, the system doesn't actually know where the truck is?
No, it relies on GPS to perform its, to perform its work. It's kind of both things. I, I'm going to struggle with the classification of it. You know, it's both utilizes the GPS within the truck, but also is, you know, a standing alone piece of software that says, go here, do this, that type of thing. So it's, and it gives you the ability to have after action, understanding of like how much was collected and what the implication is for every one of those routes. Like, so it gives you kind of that system perspective of work being done across the city at the same time.
Okay, I, yeah, I mean, I think I've mentioned you a million times. I think one of, one of our problems is figuring out, and I don't want to get a phone call from, from Johnny G here, but figuring out what the Environmental Services workers are doing and why so much trash is getting missed in the back of a truck and, and also understanding that it is their incentive to move as quickly as humanly possible. Like, there, there's, there, you know, their incentive is to get done with this route. And if ninety-five percent of the trash makes it into the back of the, the truck, that's great. But I'm always worried, like, how do we get that to a hundred percent?
Yeah, I agree. I, I think just some clarifications from my perspective. It's my belief that we collect ninety-nine point nine percent of the trash every day. There are, you know, roughly a hundred and thirteen thousand pickup locations that we hit every week. Once you factor in the recycling routes, that's, let's legitimately, we make a hundred and seventy thousand stops every week. When we look at the three one one data, over the course of a quarter, we will have stopped at well over a million locations. And we might get, you know, in, in the order of magnitude of eleven hundred or twelve hundred three one one complaints on missed pickup, which again is roughly like a point, a tenth of a percent. So are we at a hundred percent? No, we're not, but we are very, very close to a hundred percent.
The, the missed pickups don't even bother me. It's, it's, I mean, they do bother me, but-
They bother anybody that uses a garbage truck.
They really bother, yeah, they really bother someone on the phone. But the thing that bothers me is always the, the trash that, that doesn't, that misses the back of the truck, that ends up on the road instead of ending up in the back of the truck.
Yeah.
You know, and, and the difference there, and it probably is, you're probably right, it's probably a fraction of a percent. But, you know, I want it to get, to be zero.
I want it to get to be zero. You know, if it's zero, that means there's less litter in the street, which is less impactful to residents everywhere. It stays out of a river, so it just makes everything cleaner. I'm with you on that in complete agreement. You know, I think everything, every tool that we can do to make the work easier for our workers, I'm not going to dispute that they have a, you know, a contract provision that essentially incentivizes them to work quickly. And we talk about, I mean, our leadership talks about that every day, about how we can get them to be mindful, thoughtful. That also, I think, places a safety burden on them that they themselves might not necessarily admit to in all instances. But, you know, there's a, there's a lot there to continue to get better at. So I see this RouteSmart as just one tool in the tool belt of things that we can do to get better at collecting, folks' recycling and refuse.
Awesome. Well, glad to see this, we'll be glad to see the results from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick?
Sorry, yeah, thank you. Just, so just so, just for, I know that you've said this already, but currently are garbage truck drivers are using paper maps?
Uh, they're not maps, they're, they're a list of directions.
So paper directions?
That's correct.
Like a piece of paper?
A binder.
A binder? Is that the driver that's doing, that has to look in that binder?
Yes, if they don't know where they are, yes.
Right, if they're new or it's a new route or they're covering somebody that they haven't done this one before, like any number of situations.
Yes.
So, I mean, I get like the hesitation, because I mean, with tech, right, like you, you don't know if something works and maybe it's, but, I mean, that's just not, we, we can't have our drivers using paper. I mean, that is a giant inefficiency that is, it's just unacceptable that we're using pa- I mean, I, can you imagine like trying to get on the holidays, like in the snow to your relative's house? I mean, I remember using paper. My mom used to print out MapQuest and that was even more technology than a binder with written out directions, right? So, I don't know. But I will say, the, I, the, the point about, about input is important, about user feedback, right? Usability, and I think that that goes back to what we were discussing previously with the, you know, the need to, you need to make sure that the technology works for the people who are using it. And you do that through this kind of planning, right, like through sitting down and actually running it through, rather than just buying it, deploying it, like out of the box. I guess unfortunately, I'm not, I don't think I'm going to be able to make this snow, but I am curious. So with the snow tracker, I know, with the snow tracker, is that, like, is that interface that the people are seeing, is that the same thing, like, that's for the public, is that the same thing that, that say, Bill Crean is using to see?
No.
If a truck, like if a street got, got done or whatever?
Correct, yeah, no, it would not, it's not, it's not the same, it's based on the same data, but it has some more restrictions as opposed to it. And I believe, like, we made the transition on the snow placker, the snow, the snow tracker. I believe we've left that functionality down on the app that's visible to the public because we changed our automated vehicle locator, AVL, we changed services-
Okay.
From Skyhawk to Samsara. So I think there is a- So, I think there is a technological gap that still needs to be figured there to get that information back in the public's hands.
Okay, and then, and so as for the connection to the weight load, so that's like if a truck isn't full, like the, it, that's connected to the RouteSmart?
Yeah, and not, not in like a, necessarily like a real-time way, but more like if, imagine, you know, you're trying to balance the work for, you know, the 130 employees that we send out every day, right? And you want, more or less, you want every truck to have the same amount of weight in it. That would be ideal, you know, or at least like within a margin of error in understanding that everybody puts out a different amount of garbage every week. So, you know, right now, we know there's huge discrepancies where some of the trucks will complete their route and they won't be very full and there'll be other trucks that'll be very, very, very full. So, the RouteSmart technology gives us the ability to load weights because every time they go to the dump, they're weighed and scaled and there's an estimate of weight there. It gives us the ability to kind of go back and look and say, "Okay, we are way off. Let's reconfigure these several routes" together to, you know, equalize the load for all employees.
Got it. And so, and then, so this is a, I mean, I, you know... so the ability to lay out a map, right, lay out a route and then adjust that route, is that something that you can do just with Google Maps?
No. Well, I couldn't even imagine trying to do it with Google Maps.
Okay.
The amount of manual, manual work there would be astronomical.
Okay, so, okay, so this, just to sort of clarify, like what this tech, that it is very specific to?
It is very specific to environmental services, yes.
Okay.
This is a, you know, it's just used in cities nationwide.
Okay, and then this, and this is just a quick one back to the snowplow tracker, just for me, because I find the snowplow, well, does that tracker, like, let's say a truck goes down a street, but they've run out of salt and so they're like going down, they're making, whatever, like they're turning around, they're going back. Is that tracked in the tracker as they've done that street?
No, that's one of the problems of the previous information. You know, that, we would call that deadheading, where they're going back to getting a load, but they might be driving down somebody's street and you might get the call to say, "I just saw the truck, but it wasn't throwing any salt." Yes, because it was empty, but the snowplow tracker might have showed that as being serviced. So, that's just kind of, we believe we have a better solution to that with the new AVL and how that's tracked, but we're still in testing phase on that to make sure that all trucks can be in compliance with it. But, you know, we would like that information to be more accurate for folks, for certain.
I mean, I find, I don't know, the snowplow tracker for me is more of a, more of a pain that, because people are saying, I, I mean, I guess it's nice to look at it and then I can say, "Well, the snowplow tracker says that your street got done", but then that, I don't know. That, that public interface is, I don't know, I'd be curious to know if, if the public finds it helpful. You know, but at any rate, yeah, I just, I, I understand it's always hard with technology to know, like, is this going to be the thing? Is this the tool? Are there other cities that, that, I mean, did we, are there like reviews that we looked at with RouteSmart or anybody else that's using it?
Yeah, and there's a lot of other, there's a lot of other cities that use it.
Okay.
Yes, that's, yes, there are a lot of other cities. We, we did do research at that, but that was years ago when we applied it. I don't have that information at my ready in terms of the, what background we did to go with RouteSmart.
Yeah, and I also, I mean, I, the, it is a little frustrating, the sort of like, you, you know, when you buy this version and then you're getting it set up and then they're like, "Switcheroo", and that's something that tech companies do all the time. Anybody who's like owned a piece of Apple hardware or whatever and all of a sudden, it's like, "Oh, great, now I have to buy the other thing that, you know, only works with your system that I bought before", and that is frustrating, but unfortunately is kind of par for the course, I think, for, for tech. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley.
Thank you for coming, Director. My first question, does this technology also allow to be implemented for street cleaning as well?
This particular tech, that's a great question. I don't know if we would use this for street cleaning or not. I know the other AVL will give us that opportunity for our street sweepers. That is a, that is a great question. I'll look into that. I don't have the answer for you.
Okay, thank you, Director. And my, my other question is, you had mentioned that, you know, this allows for, you know, input, you know, or from, from the drivers and DPW staff. Does, is there anything in the technology that kind of responds to real-time conditions? Like, like you mentioned, you know, like traffic, construction. Does it, does it potentially change the route in real-time due to, you know, conditions that are, that are happening in, in the moment? Or is it, you know, just more of a digital version of, you know, of the binder?
That's a, that's a really great insightful question. I don't have the answer to it. I'm not that close to the use of the technology, but I can certainly follow up on that one. I think that, I don't know if it does adjust the route or not based on a, based on a condition, but, you know, it certainly is giving drivers alerts. So, you would presume it might be able to do that as well if there's some street closure of some kind. I will, I will follow up on that. That's a great question.
Okay, thank you. And, and I appreciate, you know, the input. I appreciate the questions, you know, from, from my council members that have, you know, made me, you know, think about this, you know, more, you know. If you could, I guess my, my last thing is just, if you could, you know, just provide, you know, like a side-by-side comparison in your mind about how, you know, inefficient the binder is, you know, versus, you know, having, I guess it would be some sort of, like you said, like an iPad or Android, you know, you know, pad, you know, how much, you know, like if you could, you know, put us in the public, you know, inside the cab, you know, of, of one of these trucks, like, you know, how different is it, you know, whether you're doing, you know, refuse work or, or snow removal, you know, to have, you know, the screen, you know, inside the cab as opposed to... and is it just, is it like, is it two people in the cab? Maybe one person's turning the pages of the binder or someone?
No, they would literally, that's a, that's a great question. They would literally have to pull over and, you know, consult the, consult the binder to tell them, if they were unfamiliar with the route.
Sure.
They would have to, you know, consult the binder to tell them where to turn next or, you know, maybe rely on their coworker who's picking up the trash to be like, "Hey, you know, like, go left up here or do this up here." So, they, there's a little bit of that collective knowledge that's retained, just, you know, as part of teamwork. I think the dramatic differences would be, you know, imagine you're going down the road and you've, you're, imagine, imagine trying to change the routes to balance them and let's say, "I'm going to give you a new route today. We completely redid the routes. Here's your new binder. Why don't you sit with it for 15 minutes and then we're going to go out there and go, go collect the garbage?" And all of the street names are like, half the street names are unfamiliar to you or they're asking you to go to a neighborhood you don't normally go with first and, you know, there's, I think that, I think that would be extremely challenging to make that change on a piece of paper. And, you know, the, they intentionally, this doesn't, it still allows the drivers to make what I like to call those in-route adjustments based on, you know, maybe they got a late start and now they're out in rush hour and they don't want to collect on Warrington Avenue because it's extremely busy right now with traffic and it would be unsafe for them. So, maybe we can go to some other neighborhoods first and collect this later. My understanding is it still allows them to do that, right? So, they're, they're still allowed to, you know, provide their judgment to the situation, if you will, and make decisions about how to best collect everybody's trash.
And, and at least I would assume that, you know, compiling these binders is a pretty time-consuming process.
Yeah, that's why they don't, that's also another reason why they don't change too often, right?
Right, okay. I think that's all my questions. Thank you for your time, Director.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, Director.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
So, I just, I'll save most of my questions for later, but the snow tracker, okay, is that included in this cost?
No.
It is not, okay. Snow tracker is up and running still?
Okay.
Is it?
No, I, I...
Oh, I don't know, I'm asking, yeah.
Yeah, no, I believe it's disconnected.
Oh, it's disconnected. We're done with it. Are we bringing it back?
To be determined as if we bring it back or not, but, you know, I, I think we would, if it works correctly and it's something that the public wants, then, then yes, but I would want public input to that.
Yeah, I, I'm not a fan of it, you know? I mean, as you know, dead time, people, especially my district, which doesn't have a public works facility right now, they're traveling to the salt dome, then they're not in my district. You know what I get? I get flooded with phone calls. There is not a truck in 4th District, but there's 10 in Squirrel Hill, basically, you know? I get that all the time. It's such a pain in the rear, I can't tell you. I would love to just do without that. Is that, have we decided which way we're going on that?
I haven't decided which way we're going with that. Haven't yet had those conversations with my team, to be honest, focusing on just the implementation of the current AVL, making sure that current drivers understand there's routes.
So, if we want to go back to it, what do we have to renew a contract for that? Or is that done separately or what was it?
The web application, I don't think we need to. I think we just need to kind of...
Reconnect it?
Yes, if you, if you will, replumb it, if you will.
Leave that plug, leave that plug out of the system, would you please, for, for the sake of all of us?
I appreciate the feedback, yeah.
So, you know, I, again, I get frustrated with technology, the expenses, right? Everything, you know, you get it up and running and then it's obsolete and then we're back at the table like we were previously before you got here for another system that we have to buy into because it's the new product and everything else is old and outdated and I kind of feel the same way about, you know, GPS and the vehicles, you know? I mean, what, so many times I ask, "What did we do before GPS, right?" You know, we asked directions, we got around, we paid more attention. For me, you know, I, I just, I know maybe a new driver, it's very helpful, but get them to know that route like the back of their hand and, you know, I feel like that's the best means. I, I was never a big believer in having this technology in our vehicles. I know, yeah, for a new driver, it may help, but, you know, the idea for me is, they know their route, so, well, they shouldn't even need that. They should, they should know exactly where to go and they should know how to adjust on the fly, like you're saying, that new technology might allow us to do, you know, accident up here, let's go do this section first, you know? So, I just think there's no, no better device than human judgment, I guess. And I hate to see what we, money we sink into. Technology is just crazy, I think, so. The garbage cans, that has nothing to do with anything. The smart garbage cans?
This is, does not relate to the smart garbage.
We still have that, though.
Uh, yeah, but that's under significant review, so, yes, but yes, we still have...
Get rid of that, too. Let's get rid of that. I'm serious, I'm serious. That's all for you, Mr. President. Thanks.
Thank you. Second round. Councilman Wilson.
Uh, thanks. And a follow-up question about how this is going to go down, so... Someone's actually gonna put in the route? You know, like the, I don't know, supervisor's gonna put in the routes for his division or however it's split up? Right? I mean, this, this thing's not going to come up with their own route on its own, right?
No, no.
Because some trucks can't go down certain roads.
They started with a baseline of their existing routes and they were, you know, using that to do it. And if you can imagine, I mean, it gets, it's fairly technical, but my analogy is always like, this is a ball of yarn. If you're going to change one string in that ball of yarn, how do you do it without impacting all the other strings? You really can't, right? So, what the technology does is it allows you to do that, to make those adjustments, but you want to be mindful that you're not.
Because there's a different truck that goes down the alleyway first, the bigger truck, so that's all going to be...
And you're, we're talking strictly about the RouteSmart, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, in some cases, it's a foreman truck that gets dispatched to certain dead ends that the larger truck can't navigate or certain narrow conditions, yeah.
So, like if, you know, I don't know, I'm gonna, is there, will be like an option where you see like Monday through, I don't know, Friday routes, and you're like, "Okay, today's the Monday route"?
Are you talking about like for, yeah, that, that would be...
I mean, they're all different routes.
Yes.
And they all have to have, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I just want to, uh, just, just reiterate, like, definitely, I mean, I don't know, it's, it's, it's hard to... you know, once you hear Councilman Coghill speak, you're like, "Well, it is true, like, that is the job to know the route." I don't know, I do think that technology is a good thing. So, I'm not against the paper thing, but, you know, to, to your comments, Councilperson Warwick, about, you know, they're paper, this is, you know, you know, like it's archaic type thing. Hope I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I agree, you know, I think there is, you know, path forward. I think my comments, I don't want my, I don't want my comments to be misinterpreted when I was questioning how useful this would be because I wasn't here whenever they got the snow, the snow tracker or whatever, not even the tracker, but the actual, because, let's make something clear, the snowplow tracker that people see on the screen, the public does, that's different than the RouteSmart stuff, yeah.
Yeah, you got it correct.
And, and also what's in the closet for the snowplows, like for the drivers to...
Yes.
Yeah, so like, we've been here before, where we're all going, "I wasn't here", but imagine people are like, "Yeah, well", whoever's trying to push it on this side of the table saying, "We had, you know, they're, they're using paper now and we're going to put that on a screen for them." Like, you know, that story's been done before and it didn't work or, you know, there's this issue with it, which we'll go through later probably with these, with these routes, so, you know. So, I think these are all valid, you know, questions that people bring up, like hesitant, hesitancy about moving forward in sort of technology because we also have drivers that just turn it off, right? In the past for snowplow routes.
Yeah.
And so, like, will this also be something where they have to keep it on? And then, like, is that, like, part of the, you know, the disciplinary act? Like, is this going to be like a thing that if a driver turns it off, then they're going to be disciplined? Like, what, how is this going to work?
I think that's to be determined. I wouldn't recommend that. Like, if we're doing the feedback correctly, which is what I would like to see.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just wondering what the, how strict is this going to be for them?
No, I think we still have to allow for the judgment of the driver. There might be, there are things that no technology can account for that's a changing environment. What if somebody parks three feet from the curb in the middle of the street and they pull up on there and they're just like, "Now I can't get down this already narrow street with the garbage truck"?
Yeah.
And, you know, the technology's going to tell them to keep going, but they're, you know... I'm always reminded of the, the episode of The Office where the, the GPS was telling Michael Scott to drive into the lake and they were saying, "No", but he just drove into the lake anyways. Like, we don't want that, right? That's the, kind of the silliest version of it, but we want drivers to be exercising their great judgment. It's necessary to the job.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I just want to make a point, but just kind of like deja vu for a lot of older, older members here that they're, you know, they've heard the paper, paper, put it on the screen, they're going to put it on the screen, you know? That didn't work out, so now we're, you know, people are hesitant about, you know, especially if there's evidence that there's issues with prior stuff that we bought and we're supposed to do the similar thing. So, anyway, thanks for your time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our final bill of the day, Bill 1521.
Bill 1521, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution 539 of 2016 as amended entitled, authorizing the mayor, city clerk and/or director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract or contracts or agreement or agreements with Granicus, Inc. for software upgrades, server hosting services and annual maintenance of Legistor, agenda management and video streaming in order to increase the cost by $9,286.03 for total cost not to exceed $498,088.07 to replace end-of-life hardware.
Motion to adjourn?
Take it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda. Is there anything from members? If not, we do have meeting announcements this afternoon at 2:00 PM. Council will hold a cablecast post-agenda discussion on snow removal in the city of Pittsburgh, chaired by Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith. Next week, council will hold our regular meeting on Tuesday, March 4th and our standing committee on Wednesday, March 5th at 10:00 AM. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline or Carter Clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Or Carter Clerk's office at four one two two five five twenty-one thirty-eight, and we have a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting. Tag it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.